All right, welcome everyone to the Thursday, September 16th, 2021, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And in accordance with Executive Order N dash two nine dash two zero, the Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually. Please go to the county website and you can see the different ways you can join us.
Recording in progress.
By the allegiance of the United States of America, and the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, limited liberty and justice for all. And you, Laura had asked for a real call please, as the commission is present.
Alan Bongio.
Here.
Thomas Smoliver. Noah Levy.
Here.
Mike Newman.
Present.
Peggy O'Neil. She'll be late. Brian Mitchell. Melanie McGaver.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have enough for a meeting. We have four members. Okay, and it sounds like we may have a late member or two. All right, thank you, Laura. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We don't have any modifications to the agenda. There is supplemental information for item number E1 for AT&amp;T Mobility. That is available through the legislative system on the county website. And it has been given to all of the planning commissioners.
Thank you. Now we will move on to item number B, which is public comment. This is time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So. I see public seven four two nine is our first caller. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Robi Tenorio, and I'd like to recommend to your commission, or I recommend to your commission, to somehow begin the process of incentivizing water storage for cannabis farms, either with tax credits or lower fees, and perhaps something similar to incentivize no generator use for cannabis farms. I think we, we, we really want to move away from the generators and we really want water storage. And then I have a question is who determines which projects come before your commission or which projects are heard by the zoning administrator? And who determines if it's on the consent agenda? And the reason I'm asking for clarity on this is because this morning on the zoning administrator's consent agenda, there was a proposal for downtown Petrolia for an acre of new cannabis. And it was removed from the consent agenda and then at least 10 or more residents expressed their concerns. So it seemed that it would have been more appropriate to go before your commission. And then if you could answer that, but I'll first I'll say my last little thing here is that I, I'm concerned about the continued permitting of new cannabis in our county where the trade groups and the farmers are announcing that they're in an emergency because they're not able to sell their product because of a glut in the market and the high taxation and state fees. So you permitted a new grow of 30,000 square feet at your last meeting with plans for a six harvest a year. And only water storage proposed and a declaration that their well was disconnected hydrologically to surface water. So that, that's just still very concerning that that went through. Okay, thank you very much. I hope you could answer the question about the zoning administrator and the planning commission who gets food and water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is public seven one zero eight.
Good evening. This is Bonnie Blackberry, and I just had a process kind of a question or whatever. Last meeting, the on the consent agenda was the action summaries for over five months of planning commission meetings. And they're regarded as the minutes of the meetings. And I was really surprised that they all got passed without, I mean, apparently nobody read them. And I'm thinking, well, I guess the planning commissions are proving that they got the documents, the action summaries, but not that they approved what was actually in it since they probably didn't know. And I would hope in the future that the action summaries would come a lot sooner and be treated like minutes where the next meeting, you haven't opened to say, you know, was what happened here reflected in these minutes? And does anybody have any changes or additions rather than just blindly approving them? So thanks for listening to that.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else who'd like to speak on public comment? All right, seeing that, I'm going to close it. And I believe the director would like to address those items.
Yeah, I would. Thank you, Chair Bongio. So with respect to the first question, who decides whether something goes to the planning commission or zoning administrator and whether or not it's on consent? Typically, conditional use permits we bring to the planning commission. Special permits, especially special permits that are normally administrative, go to the zoning administrator unless there's a request for a public hearing. The CCLUO 2.0 does identify that up to an acre of cultivation can be approved with a special permit. And so normally, a special permit is approved or acted upon by sending out a notice of intent to approve. What we do for all cannabis permits is we go beyond that. And we schedule them all for a public hearing with the zoning administrator. Normally, the zoning administrator will act on them unless there are policy implications involved in taking that action. If they're pretty, if they're straightforward and consistent with the ordinance and consistent with actions that the planning commission has been taken, the zoning administrator will act and then will take testimony, will act. In terms of the question about incentivized water storage and generators, that is something that is being worked on by the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee of the Board of Supervisors. I believe the first meeting in October, there will be a proposal to the board for that. In terms of the meeting summaries, we do want to get those back to you at the next meeting. That is our endeavor. One of the struggles is, is that it is a tight turnaround. Because on every other week's cycle, that gives us about three to four days to get it done before we need to be putting it, into the packet. And obviously, we didn't get it done this week. I apologize for that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you double clicked.
Sorry. So now we're going to move on to item number E, continued public hearings. And the first item is, or the only item is the new singular wireless PCS special permit in the arcade area. I suspect we're going to get some kind of staff.
Thank you, Chair Bongio, members of the planning commission. My name is Cliff Johnson, and I'm going to go ahead and present the AT&amp;T special permit. I'm going to try to move through it really quickly. This is now the fourth time that this has come in front of your commission in the last couple of months. So if I can share my screen here, give me one second here. So if I do, sorry, I got a little sideways. And. So let me know if the screen is being shared right now. You should see the presentation.
No, it shows the desktop.
Okay, let's try something else here. Screen two. Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for bearing with me there. So this is, as I mentioned, the fourth time that this has come in front of the planning commission fairly recently. So originally, we brought this to the planning commission to propose cell towers at the same time. They were both proposed in the Arcata Bottoms area, both basically right off of Foster. You can see here the PWM site and the AT&amp;T wireless site. And the county did recommend that only one of the two be approved. The decision or the direction to staff at that original meeting was to approve, to bring back for approval the PWM site, which was a 130-foot tall tower. And to bring back a resolution to deny the AT&amp;T wireless site here on Foster Road, which at that time was a 100-foot tower with a faux water tank at the top. Subsequent to that meeting, the planning commission did receive a lot of public comment in support of the AT&amp;T wireless site. And so when that came back, the planning commission did direct staff to actually bring it back again for approval. At that time, it was a 100-foot tall tower, which is what this is showing here. And in order to accommodate additional carriers, the direction from the planning commission was to increase it to 120 feet. And that's what you're seeing here with these revised plans. This is now at 120 feet. And so unfortunately, what happened at the last planning commission meeting is that since it had been continued and the increase in height had occurred, we did decide that that needed to be renoticed. So we did renotice this for this hearing. So one of the things that was shared with your commission late this afternoon, I believe, was some coverage maps that the applicant for the AT&amp;T site had prepared. I did hear from them just before this meeting that those were actually incorrect and not containing the proper height of the proposed cell towers. And so what you're seeing here is something that they did share with us that is showing the proposed coverage that would occur at both the PWM site, which you can see on the right here, the Sun Valley location, and what AT&amp;T is saying the coverage would be at their Foster site if that were to be approved. And one of the things that I did want to just direct your attention to, as you can see here, Alliance Road, the green shows the reliable service both in and outdoors. And so what AT&amp;T is showing here is that there would be increased reliable service both in and outdoors in this, as a result of the AT&amp;T site on Foster. So as I mentioned, the commission has received a large number of public comments, mostly in support of this. There's also been a number of comments submitted by the proposed operator of the Sun Valley site, the PWM site. And that includes some information that they shared with you this afternoon, I believe, where they were offering to lease the Sun Valley site to AT&amp;T at 50% of the market costs. So just wanted to make sure that the planning commission was aware of all of that information that's come in in the last couple of days. And based on the direction that we've received over the last couple of meetings from the planning commission, our recommendation is to find that the commission has considered that this is categorically exempt from CEQA under Section 15303, make the required findings for approval of the special permit and to adopt the resolution that approves the special permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions. And I'll try to turn this back over to you and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Right. Any questions for Cliff? Mike Newman, go ahead.
Yes, does this site require general plan amendments be done?
Through the chair, Commissioner Newman, this, this does not require general plan amendment to be done to locate the cell tower on this property. It's owned agricultural, which does allow for the proposed, what we would consider to be a quasi-public use, basically a utility. With, it's actually principally permitted on this, within the zone. The need for the special permit is because a cell tower would need to exceed the height limit of the zone district.
And doesn't the general plan call for one tower in an area?
Again, through the chair, what the general plan directs staff to consider, and actually I should say directs the decision maker to consider in making a decision, is to reduce the visual clutter from, from multiple cellular towers. And then to encourage citing, you know, co-location on, on single sites. So I wouldn't say that it specifically prohibits it, but it does encourage that you reduce them to the extent possible.
Because of the areas that we don't want to have all sorts of towers all around? Is that the reasoning behind that?
I would agree with that. I believe that's the reasoning, yes.
I can't find any report right now, but how, how far away is this proposed site from the school, Bloomfield School, and then compared to the PWM site?
Good question. If you give me a second, I will look through the report to, to try to find that.
And on that one as well, is there a requirement for noticing or for a distance with schools?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Newman. Sorry about that, that I didn't have that right off the top of my fingers. But the, this site would be approximately 1,200 feet or so from the Bloomfield School. The PWM site is roughly almost three times that distance. So just about 3,500 feet. There is no requirement in the county general plan or zoning ordinance for a setback from the school, however.
Okay. Last question is, in the report, page 22, that the AT&amp;T, I'm guessing they provided it, but that's what I'm asking with the aramis pin in the proposal of where this PWM or Sun Valley Group, they're calling it or labeled it as, why it was misplaced. I mean, it's not like we haven't been doing this for a while now. I'm looking at page 22 and then 24, 23. This is the Epic Attachment Two.
I, I see. Commissioner Newman, you're asking me why the, they're misplacing the Sun Valley Group location? Is that right?
Yes, is that their, this is their report, Attachment Two?
This is a report from Epic Wireless AT&amp;T. Yes, that's correct.
And I don't see in the report here from the department that that was pointed out until when?
So what this is showing is potential alternative sites for the AT&amp;T facility. When this application was submitted, there was not an application by PWM to locate it in the location where ultimately the planning commission approved. And so I believe that's why they're showing you this pin here, which is that that was a potential alternative site. At the time that they submitted the application, they had not identified the PWM site as a, as a potential alternative.
But I would think that they would bring it up to date if it's coming to being permitted. I, I just don't understand why they wouldn't update the information that's being put out. So they've had several bites of this. I, I just don't understand why it's like that.
Is that it?
That's it. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for staff before we open this up for public comment? Okay, seeing no hands, I'm now going to open this up for public comment, so. And is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Go ahead, Ashley.
Thank you, Ellen. Please advise if you can hear myself.
Yes, can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, commissioners. Again, my name is Ashley Smith at Epic Wireless Group, working on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. I just wanted to let you know that we are here to answer any questions we have. I know pin on page 22, excuse me, 23 of the staff report about the Sun Valley Group pin location. So initially, when we did our feasibility walk back in 2020, we did reach out to Sun Valley Group and we did walk that parcel that's highlighted. However, we did decide, we had no information in regards to them already being in contract with PWM. We did not know about any other agreement. I believe that was executed in 2018 on the other property. And we did not decide to submit that to AT&amp;T as the proposed facility was a better location and closer to the community to the east. So our AT&amp;T proposed facility was submitted to AT&amp;T for review and approval. And it's our current proposed facility, again, at a 120-foot, 112-foot rest center and a faux water tank design. Are there any other questions?
Any questions for Ashley, where she's here? I don't believe so, so. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public that wishes to speak on this? All right. Seeing that, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Where do we want to go with this? I'm going to handle that. Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we've been going around and around on this, but I do feel that there's ample evidence to support the assertion that this AT&amp;T tower would be superior to the other one. And moreover, what we've learned from, from watching the, the communications between the two is that I, I don't, you know, I don't know that both will get built. At this point, the other one is permitted. Supposedly steps are underway to build it, but you know, I, I guess I kind of feel that we may need to let the market sort this one out. And as far as I'm concerned, the AT&amp;T tank, the AT&amp;T tower with the faux water tank at 120 feet capable of, of maintaining four carriers is as good as or superior to the other one that is already permitted. And so I'm in favor of going ahead and permitting this one as well. Despite the fact that, as Mike has noted, the general plan has a general provision or a policy that we don't want to, that we want to discourage cluttering and, you know, of having too many of these in one area. I recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Any other permits? Commissioner, go ahead, Mike.
Well, you know, I hate to point out certain things, but part of the general plan is to not grant special privileges, and this would be doing that for this property owner. It also points out about the view shed. We, in our discussions before, and why it got to 120 feet beyond the 100 feet when it was originally proposed was because it could only carries a few carriers. So now they're coming with it going up higher and able to carry four carriers. The PWM is already permitted. It's behind an existing structure that is very tall. And it fits in with general plan requirements much better than this proposed site does. It is in more of a industrial type area, so it's hidden for the most part behind that barn from the majority of Arcadian. And I, I just feel that the reach out by the other owner to offer a very big incentive and to be at the top of the tower, which has the best response, is very good. I've seen some of the proposals. He talks about permitting, has it going out for plans, showed some plans. We see that it is being worked on to go. So I don't think that it will not go. I think it will because there's already, Verizon has already proposed stuff. That's part of this paperwork that has all come in, showing that there are carriers that want to go. So I don't think we need to permit a second location right here. And this big water tower just sticks out like a sore thumb to me, actually.
That all, Mike?
For right now, until I hear something else.
You. Anything else? I guess I'll just leave Melanie and myself to have any comments on it. I'll comment. I, I I felt that the, the first tower that we approved was the superior location. But on the same note, I, I feel that if I believe in competition, I believe in, in people doing it if they feel that it will work. I, I have a feeling that maybe one, that the, one of the two towers and probably the second tower won't get built if, if they're both approved. But I think I would probably, unless I was really persuaded to not go through this one. I, I agree with what you say, Mike. I just believe in free enterprise and and that they'll do it if they feel it's worth doing. I think having duplicate coverage is not always a bad thing. An emergency or something so that one carrier might be able to transmit where another one might not. I don't know if that kind of situation could happen, but only imagine two is better than one. So I'd probably be in support of it, but I'm willing to be persuaded not to. So. You know, that's just my thoughts on it at this point. Melanie? Laura just said you wanted, I don't see you popping up on the list, but. Go ahead.
Yeah, my reception cut it from it there ironically. Did you?
Now I see you. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, my opinion really hasn't changed from the last three times that we've deliberated on this project. So I, I still prefer the, the set ex of this one now that they have the extra carriers and this, you know, same capabilities. I, I feel like it's a project that meets all of the requirements. I don't really see a, a conflict with the general plan. Not in so many words. And I also think we should let the market sort it out. So I'm in favor of approving the project.
Does anyone, anybody care to make a motion towards that? No, I see your hand up.
Me sure. Yes. I will go ahead and move that we have considered the categorical exemption for the project as described by fifteen-three oh three of the state Sequoia guidelines. And that we make the required findings for approval of this special permit and approve the AT&amp;T special permit as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions.
Second.
So we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Then Laura will call those please.
Ellen Bonjio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Mike Hammond?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries three to one. All right. So that brings us on to item number F. Public hearings. And the first item is Diamond Sea Ranch in the Garberville area. To the staff report.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Hey, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Jacobson. I'm a planner for the county. I am presenting the Diamond Sea Ranch Proposed Agricultural Preserve, which includes a partial disestablishment of an agricultural preserve, zone reclassification, and the establishment of a new Class B act preserve. The subject parcels are in the Garberville area off of Alderpoint Road and Tubi Ranch Road. There are nine parcels in total. The existing Class B preserve was originally under the Tubi Ranch Conservation Preserve and Contract since nineteen seventy-seven in cow calf production. A seven hundred and sixty-one point five acre parcel has been owner operated by the applicant Dylan Carr in commercial cow calf production since two thousand and one. The applicant purchased the other seven parcels and one portion of a parcel shown here in November twenty twenty from Buck Mountain Ranch Limited Partnership. The majority of the land is vacant and used for cow calf operations increasing. One parcel is developed with a residence and ag accessory structures. The application is to disestablish one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six point five acres from the existing Buck Mountain Ranch Agricultural Preserve. The existing Buck Mountain Ranch Agro, oh, sorry. The existing Williamson Act contract for Buck Mountain Ranch, which totals ten thousand and five hundred acres expires in twenty twenty-six due to noncompliance with the contract. The application is to reclassify the zoning of five parcels to AEB five one sixty, which I will discuss in the next slide. And the application is to establish a Class B agricultural preserve. On August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the Williamson Act Committee voted five zero to recommend the project for approval. With regards to the zoning reclassification, one parcel of eighty acres will be reclassified from unclassified to AEB five one sixty. Two parcels of a hundred and seventy-one acres and four hundred and twelve and a half acres will be reclassified from AETPZ to AEB five one sixty with the TPZ portions of the lands remaining as TPZ. Two parcels of eighty-six acres and eighty-five and a half acres will be reclassified from AE to AEB five one sixty. And all of their required findings can be made for zone reclassifications, including general plan consistency and the reclassification being in the public interest to preserve the county's agricultural lands. This project meets all of the requirements for a Class B preserve in both state law and county ordinance. The western portion of the proposed preserve is one thousand six hundred and thirty-three and a half acres. And the eastern portion is a hundred and sixty-three acres. The applicant has provided the grazing agreement between his portions of the proposed preserve and the lands between, which I can go back in the map if you would like to see. The applicant has provided cattle receipts proving required income and the lands are not considered prime agricultural land. The zoning reclassification will result in all land that's not in TPZ to be zoned as AEB five one sixty and less than twenty-five percent of the preserve is zoned as TPZ. The contract would prohibit any subdivision of land. County staff recommends that the commission make all of the required findings to approve the partial disestablishment, zone reclassification of five parcels and reformation of an agricultural preserve consistent with section one five three one seven open space contracts or easements of the Sequoia Guidelines and to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, Board of Supervisors. If approved, the board will execute a Williamson Act contract between the county and the applicant. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions from the Commissioners or the public.
All right. Is there any questions? Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Just as a quick thing for the public, the reason simplified for this is, is to go back into the Williamson Act so the taxes are lower. And then it preserves the land for livestock and that sort of use.
Yes, that is correct through the chair, Commissioner Newman. As Ms. Jacobson said, this was non-renewed due to noncompliance from the Tubi Ranch. And so all of that has been slowly phasing out and will be out of the Williamson Act by twenty twenty-six. And so this applicant, this property owner wants to be back in the Williamson Act. And that's what this is for.
And just a question, how long is this applicant own these parcels?
The applicant has owned the largest parcel for, since two thousand and one. And he bought the other parcels, the other eight parcels at the end of last year, at the end of twenty twenty from Buck Mountain Limited Partnership.
Okay. And, and just for clarification to the public, that means that, you know, cannabis growing can be done on any of the parcels into the one?
Through, through the chair, that's actually, that's not completely correct. The when the county was going through the, the cannabis ordinance, the, the proc, the process of adopting the cannabis ordinance, the Williamson Act Committee did decide that cannabis could be compatible with Williamson Act lands as long as it was not preventing the other agricultural use of the property that, that justifies it being in the Williamson Act in the first place. And so there is, it is potentially, there is the potential for cannabis to be located on this, this site, whether it was in the Williamson Act or not.
Is there a percentage of what the parcel is that it's limited to per the cannabis use?
One of the things that the, the, actually, the Planning Commission and the board did in adopting the revised Williamson Act Guidelines in twenty sixteen was to require that the majority of the land area that is under the Williamson Act contract be dedicated to the agricultural use that justifies the Williamson Act contract. And so in this case, you know, over fifty percent of the land would need to be utilized for cattle grazing. Now separately from that, the Williamson Act Committee has given staff guidance that anything more than two acres in size for cultivation site that is in the Williamson Act must come in front of the Williamson Act Committee to be reviewed for compatibility. And so anything less than two acres could potentially be approved without going through the Williamson Act Committee. Anything more than that would need a recommendation from them.
And it would not be a conditional permit, or would it be a conditional permit? If it doesn't have to go through the Williamson Committee?
It would, and, and it could be any number of, any of the different permit types that the cannabis ordinance identifies. So it could be a zoning clearance certificate if it was ten thousand square feet or less for the cultivation area. Could be a special permit up to one acre. And anything more than that would be a conditional use permit that would have to come in front of the planning commission.
So once again, just to help me out, what's the benefit of approving this?
So the, the benefit of approving this would be that the land would be tied up for at least a period of ten years. With the Williamson Act, you enter into a land conservation contract that is a rolling ten-year contract. And that prohibits parcel divisions, as Ms. Jacobson said. It also prohibits excessive residential development and other development that is not agriculturally related. And so the county's general plan does support the protection of agriculture in this way and the, the use of these, sorry, of the Williamson Act for protection of open space.
Okay, yeah, for incentives to keep them together. Okay, thank you.
Mike, any other question for staff before we open this up for public comment? It's, and then I will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Seven one zero eight, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Steve. So changing this and putting it in the Williamson Act, can there be more houses built on those parcels? And can there be, if you're calling it agricultural for the cannabis? Can they have different operations on different parcels within the the Williamson Act land? Okay, so those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other comments in public? All right. So would Clip or yourself, Director, like to answer that question?
Sure. So as Mr. Johnson mentioned, the purpose of the Williamson Act contract is to preserve the land in agricultural use. And as such, there is a limitation to the number of residents, things that can be placed on the parcel. And also it does allow the approval of cannabis cultivation of the parcel. But the parcel is held as one of, one contract. We've not run into a situation yet where somebody has wanted to come in on each of the different parcels and apply for different cannabis cultivation permits.
Thank you, Director. All right. Any other questions?
There was. As part of that question that was proposed was about residential development. Isn't there a hundred and sixty acre minimum or something at vicinity about residential development in this?
So, sure, Commissioner Newman, one of the things that the county's Williamson Act program does is there is something that the board will adopt, which when it establishes the Williamson Act Preserve called the Uniform Rules that apply to the Williamson Act. And those rules have traditionally been applied by the board to limit residential development to no more than two houses per contract. So in this case, even though there may be nine separate parcels and each of them could, you know, have a, a single house or two houses under the zoning, they would be further restricted from the residential development as a result of being in the Williamson Act.
All right. Seeing no more public, I'm going to close the public comment now and I'll bring this back to the commission. So anybody have any thoughts on this? Questions? Want to make the motion? Mike, I see your hand and Noah's up. So Mike first, then Noah. Oh, and Melanie. Go ahead, Mike. Mike, you're muted.
Talking, I was talking with it muted, kind of doing an Alan. So I'd like to make the motion to make all the required findings of approval for the de-establishment, disestablishment, agricultural preserve and reformation agriculture, agricultural zone reclassification based on evidence in the staff report and recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the Diamond Sea Ranch project, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second to that? We will also have a little discussion if somebody has any.
I'll second that.
All right. And Melanie, you have your hand up. So I'm assuming you wanted to make a motion or? So I'm assuming you want to make a motion or you want some discussion on this. So go ahead.
I was just volunteering to make a motion as well.
Appreciate that. All right, looks like everybody's good. So we have a motion and a second. Laura, your roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Boncio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. All right, everyone, move on to item number two. Humboldt, or 28759 Humboldt Inc., conditional use permit in the Miranda area.
Can you confirm you can hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Great. I am David Mack with Harrison Associates representing 28759 Humboldt Inc. The property located off of Salmon Creek Road in the Miranda area is zoned, you are unclassified with a land use designation of residential agriculture. It is approximately 10 acres in size and is highlighted in the pink purple for your reference. The permit is for a conditional use permit and special use permit. The conditional use permit is to permit 12,600 square feet of mixed light cultivation in eight separate greenhouses along with a 700-square-foot nursery, which constitutes about 5.5% of the requested cultivation. So that's consistent with the average of 10% or less. And the special use permit related to this is requested for the reduction of the required 600-foot setback from public lands. They're a state located to the north of this. Irrigation would be supplied through a permitted groundwater well. Estimated water use is approximately 196,000 gallons or 15.5 square feet per acre, per square foot. I apologize. The existing onsite storage is 61,150 gallons of water, made up of a 20,000-gallon water bladder and 16 various tank tanks of different sizes. I do want to note that the application does include the proposal to have the applicant replace the 20,000-gallon bladder with nine 5,000-gallon water tanks, which would total 45,000 gallons or an increase of 25,000 gallons. That is proposed to occur within the next two years. Also, the applicant is proposing to install rain catchment gutters on existing shed structures. And those rain gutters will provide approximately 2,160 square feet of catchment gutters and should yield between 38,376,700 gallons of water per year, depending on the amount of rainfall applied. This factor, the lower number was determined based on the 50% drought factor Humboldt County is currently experiencing. And in a normal rain year, a higher 76,000 number would be anticipated. And the reason for that rain catchment is to provide additional storage and not rely so much on the permitted well and use resources as they come down from the sky. Power and electricity is provided. That's an effort by one source. There's only one onsite generator of approximately 150 kilowatts. And condition 17 of the permit does require the replacement of the generator with either PG&E or another reliable source, no later than December 31, 2025. As I mentioned earlier, there is a special permit for the setback to state park lands, which are located in the north. There is no sensitive habitat located within the feet of the parcel. The project is not anticipated to have impact on park lands. And of note, State Parks was forwarded the project information in March of 2021 for review, and they have not provided any comments prior to tonight's hearing. The map before you now is the site plan. The proposed eight greenhouses are circled in red. The generator location is circled in yellow, just for clear transparency. And the permitted well is circled in blue. A addendum was prepared for the project in August of 2021, which detailed no anticipated substantial impacts or effects. And no new information was discovered during the preparation of the addendum, which would require additional SECO review. And with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to permit the requested conditional use permit for 12,600 square feet in eight greenhouses, the associated 700-square-foot nursery, and a special permit for the reduction to, reduction of the 600-foot setback from public lands, subject to the conditions and evidence and pursuant to the conditions of approval recommended. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
Hi.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to get, trying to find a bigger picture of where that is. I'm looking at the aerial in the Myers Flat. So it's under, wondering if it could be put on the screen. Right in the first part of the report, page 13, it looks like, it's not labeled. And, and then it goes into the detail, page 14, closer, but I guess page 13. And if it can be shown where the public land is exactly and where this is in relation to Myers Flat. So that's the picture I'm looking at. Is it, are we able to get anything bigger or show me exactly where? Is this the state park or just forest land?
From my understanding, the state park land is located to the north. I could show Google Earth if you would like, which I could zoom out and show kind of a bigger general area. I could transition to that if the Commission would like and show you where the Myers Flat is area to the northwest. That's desirable.
So the town of Myers Flat is just south of there? Is that where I'm trying to orient myself?
That would be just north if, sorry to kind of step on your toes, David. But I have this up on my screen with the county GIS, and so I'll go ahead and just share that just to show you. And I think I'm going to do a better job than last time. You should be seeing this here. The parcel is this little one in blue. So it's just southeast of Myers Flat. And this, these parcels here are the state parks.
Okay.
And that includes this one that's immediately to the north.
And what's right to the south? Is that private land or state park area as well?
That is private land.
That's correct.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open this up for public? All right, seeing none, I will open this up now for public comments. First one is 7429. Go ahead, 7429.
Okay, so this is another farm on a well without adequate water storage. I'm glad to hear that they plan to put in more storage. But I'd like to point out, and you saw it on the map there, that the close proximity to the south fork of the Eel River. They are just proposing more storage and they require another 134, almost 135,000 more gallons to meet their needs. And this proposal also plans to use a generator basically year-round with reharvest. And those harvests involve a lot of generator use because they run air conditioning and dehumidifiers to help with drying the harvest. So as the plan stands now, it's four more years with all more year-round generator use. And I would consider that a negative impact. This is a smaller parcel, and I was under the impression that the code allows for up to 10,000 square feet on parcels over five acres. And this parcel currently does not contain a residential unit either. And the address for the applicant is in Florida. I'm sure if there's anyone the appraised of potential fire dangers from that generator running all the time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 7108. Are you there? 7108, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bonnie Blackberry Inc. This, I was concerned about the generator use as well and the proposed storage. And looking through the staff report, I didn't see any well report. And so I don't know how you made your determinations that it's not connected to any surface waters. And I guess the water bladder is, oh, that was two things. On the staff report, it has that address at Salmon Creek Road, Miranda. And then we're talking about Myers Flat. So that was a little confusing. And the staff report doesn't say whether this is existing or new. And I'm presuming it's existing. So it'd be helpful if staff reports had that information in there. Yeah, so the well determination, how they make that determination. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody on staff like to address those questions?
The well completion report is included in a cella. I have it on my screen. I can share it if desired. But it does show that the first steps to water is 110 feet below the surface. The estimated yield of the well is four gallons per minute. So that's how we made the determination that it was adequate for this project. And that was in response to 7108's comment. In terms of the comment from 7429, I do want to clarify that the total proposed storage is 86,150 gallons after the conversion of the bladder to the nine new tanks. And if you take 86,150 plus the 38,372 for the rain catchment gutters, that would be 124,500 gallons of total storage. And if you take the 86,150 plus the maximum number in a normal rain year, you would end up with 162,890 gallons. And just for transparency, the project is proposing 196,000 gallons of water. So they are making their best efforts to not rely as much on the well as they could be and provide storage as well as rain capture harvest.
Thank you. Is there any other public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. And I'm going to bring this back to the Commission. And where would we like to go with this? Follow-up questions? Anybody like to make a motion on this one then? Come on, Mike, I can tell you want to.
Noah's unmuted already.
Yeah, sure, Noah. I was just about to raise my hand and say I will make a motion on this one. Sure. With respect to 28759 Humboldt Incorporated, I move that we find that we have considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CMLUO, CCMLUO, as described by Section 15164 of the State SECO Guidelines, make the required findings for approval of the special use permit and approve the 28759 Humboldt Inc. 10994 conditional use permit and special use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Noah?
I will, I will second, and I'm thanking staff about the information about the drought factor coming into play in the reports here.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, we have a motion set up here. No further discussions. So Laura, roll call vote, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Boncio?
Yes. So motion carries unanimous on this one. So that brings us to item number three. Usually we take a break about now. So let's take about a five-minute break and then we'll come back start up with item number three. So we'll see in just five minutes. All right, welcome back, everybody. And we will continue with item number three, New Earth Farms LLC, conditional use permit in the Titlow Hill area. And staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Are you able to hear and see my screen?
I hear you. Don't see anything on your, there we go.
Okay, great. My name is Byron Turner. I'm with Laco Associates presenting this project. New or use permit application for New Earth Farms LLC, plan number 11166, located at 480 Sabre Truth Road in the Titlow Hill area. This use permit, oh, sorry. This proposed project will authorize 22,167 square feet of cannabis cultivation, consisting of 12,085 full sun and 10,080 outdoor greenhouses. Drying will take place in the existing structure. The picking and, or packing and processing, packaging and processing will take place in a new facility. Ancillary propagation currently is in an existing building. That building will be replaced with a 2,200-square-foot nursery. Power is currently by a generator, although PG&E does service the site. The applicant is in the process of upgrading the service to accommodate the rest of the site. There are three employees full-time, up to 10 seasonally. See the location here. The site is accessed by Sabre Truth Road via Titlow Hill Road. It has been evaluated and meets the standards to accommodate this use. Here is the site plan. You have a site plan here. You'll show, you'll see the layout of the site and the setbacks from property lines and water courses. There is a pond in the northwest corner, a 433,000-gallon rain catchment pond that is utilized for, for this site. There is a point of diversion, which is utilized only if the pond does not fill with rainwater. Analysis that was provided to staff supports that rainwater catchment can support the use along with the additional 23,000 gallons that are onsite in tanks. So the anticipation is that if this will be all rainwater. This concludes my presentation. I do believe the applicant is here as well. If you have any questions of me or the applicant. Uh this concludes my presentation. I do believe the applicant is here as well. If you have any questions of me or the applicant.
Any questions? First, ask me. Go ahead, Mike. You're muted, Mike. You're still muted, Mike.
There, now I've got it. Um I was looking at a letter um that was submitted and one of the questions that I also had. That I didn't quite see in the staff report, or if it could be pointed out to me, is about cumulative effects. In a general area, is that being taken into account or is that in the staff report here someplace?
Well, cumulative impacts are generally covered by the sequoia process. Um and the sequel analysis that was done for this for the site. Uh this was looked at in the larger context with the, and one of your findings is that it um meets the requirements of. The uh ordinance and that the uh there's no further sequel analysis required.
Is that spelled out right here someplace that I missed or not?
I don't think it's spelled out exactly the way you were requesting it, but it does, maybe there is a finding the commission must make. That uh will would include that the cumulative impacts of this project are not humanly significant.
With it and others in the general area.
Yes, correct, yes.
Just in case somebody can't see you nodding on the head.
Yes, sorry about that.
Cause we have phone people too. All right, thank you.
Uh Noah, go ahead.
Uh thank you. Yeah, I did have one question about the staff report. I I understand that the applicant is um asserting and planning that that most or perhaps all of their water will come from the. Pond, but there's also this um off-stream um. The there's also this point of diversion and the line at the bottom of page three and the top of page four. Um I just had a question about this. It says, conditions of approval require the applicant to obtain. Or provide proof of a right to use and divert water issued by the State Water Resources Control Board for the point of diversion. And adhere to the requirements. So that that seems to suggest that they don't have that right already or that you haven't. You don't know if they have it and I just, that may have been um just a an ambiguity in the report, but that's. That's the question I wanted to have is, that's the question I wanted to ask is, do you have more information about that water rate for the point of diversion?
Would have to defer to the applicant to find out if they have secured those permits or not.
Then I will add in reviewing the file, um I did not see a right to use and divert water, so a part of the provisional permitting would allow. For the applicant to have two years to come into compliance with the state uh. Water Resources Control Board and the Water Rights Division for use of the point of diversion. And so that's why the condition that's included.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will now open this up for the public. Is there anybody who wants to comment on this project? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Okay, well, I have Farge White. Go ahead, Farge.
All right, good evening commissioners. Um I wanted to just address a couple of comments made. I believe that the project is pre-existing and was assessed within the existing. Environmental documents prepared for the ordinances in the county. And I wanted to identify that the SIUR for the right to divert has actually been filed. It's been part of a Fish and Wildlife Agreement notification for the POD. And has been processed and registered by the State Water Resource Control Board. And I have a number for registration for the small irrigation use registration for cannabis and that number is H five zero nine two four seven. If it matters, do the commission to share that. Thank you. That's all I have for you.
All right, so. So it's back to the commission. What is? Feelings on this? Any other questions you have for staff or anything or? Somebody want to make a motion on it? Melanie, go ahead.
Uh yeah, I can make a motion if there's no other.
Feel free.
All right, so I'll motion that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration. For the C and then the L U O, as described by section one five one six four of the state sequoia guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt resolution approving New Earth Farms LLC. As recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that motion?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? I have a comment on this one. I'm not gonna make an issue of it because it's a very short road. I, it's been my pet peeve. Since this ordinance was developed and it's this road evaluation forum, this road is only point three, four miles. But at some point, we're gonna have to have a discussion about what a joke having this is and. And doing something else because it's just an insult to anybody that has uh any intelligence whatsoever that. You can call a gravel road just because it meets a few criteria. Um that it's a class four road. I I just, this appalls me that the we're. Routinely having this put in front of us. And when I hear that there's no breaks given to the cannabis industry, it makes me laugh because. Anybody that has a real-world project would love to be able to fill one of these out and get away with it, so. While I'm not gonna overbeef fight it on this one because of the short distance of the road. It's definitely something that's on my radar and I'm gonna be watched and I just. At some point, I'd love to have a discussion about getting rid of this and and bringing this into the real world like we've all talked about that. This industry is gonna come into, so. I'll leave it at that. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, Laura, roll call vote please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Uh next project, item number four Rebel Crown LLC conditional use permit and special permit. In the New Harris area.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Max Ok and I am presenting the Rebel Grown LLC conditional use permit. Can you see my screen and hear me okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh so the proposed project is a conditional use permit for thirty thousand six hundred and twenty square feet of cultivation consisting of. Six thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet of mixed light. Uh cultivation grown at nine greenhouses and the remainder twenty-three thousand six hundred and seventy. Twenty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight square feet uh outdoor. Um drying and harvest storage does occur onsite while processing activities occur offsite at a permitted facility. Uh up to fourteen uh employees may be onsite during peak operations. Uh power for the project is sourced from a five kilowatt solar array with two generators. Uh supplementing that power, a fifteen kilowatt and a five kilowatt, which are primarily used during the propagation and drying phases. Of the project. Uh there is a special permit for the continued use of three points of diversion and uh minor remediation work within the streamside management area. For water resources, the annual water use estimated is at three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred gallons. Which comes out to about ten point nine gallons per square foot. Uh irrigation water uh is sourced from the uh three points of surface water diversion as mentioned previously. And the existing available water storage onsite is actually a million five hundred and ninety thousand gallons. Uh between a series of hard tanks and a billion five hundred thousand gallon uh pond onsite. Access to the site is via private access road from South Face Road, which are privately maintained roads that ultimately connect to Island Mountain Road. A county maintained road. Excuse me, a road evaluation report was prepared by DTN Engineering and Consulting, which indicates that the roadway can accommodate the traffic generated for the project. And this slide is showing an aerial image of the uh current cultivation areas on the subject parcel. This concludes my presentation. If staff have any questions, I, or sorry, Plank Commission has any questions. I'm available to answer those as well as the applicant and agent for this project.
Any questions for staff on this one? Mike, go ahead.
Uh yeah, I just clicked on something else there too. Uh thank you. Um I did have a question. I was wanting to see in the report a little bit more. Um where the change in the grow areas are from the old area to the new. If that could be pointed out to me.
Yeah. Let's see, apologies there. The onsite relocation is uh described actually on um page three. Of the staff report uh under the bolded onsite relocation paragraph there.
Right, I saw the writing. I was looking for the map.
Right, uh the current map does not display the onsite relocation uh locations. Um the original onsite relocation uh locations that were selected and not meet all of the setback requirements. Through fire safe and the streamside management area requirements. As such, recently I have worked with the applicant and the agent to construct uh the plan as written out. In the staff report that will meet all required setbacks that will place cultivation on slopes less than fifteen percent as required by the ordinance. And um. Prove to be a environmentally superior location from where they currently stand.
So I'm I'm trying to follow you on that. Um they are not moving from the original sites or they are?
They are indeed moving from the original sites.
And on the report, in the pictures on the report where the site is, um I guess. The diagrams don't have page numbers, um but looking at the previous page, maybe sixteen and seventeen. Of the staff report.
Correct, um we, again, we do not have the current plans for the relocation effort as described in the staff report. The.
These are the current, these are the current.
That was like the current cultivation areas as they exist. Uh cultivation A and cultivation F are the cultivation areas that are to be uh minorly adjusted. Uh cultivation area A, although you cannot see it on this map, is actually at the crux or fork. Of uh two class two streams. And area F also has a class three stream running next to it.
Hey Max, excuse me, could you share your screen, pull up the exhibit so everybody can see what you're talking about?
Absolutely. Okay, uh can you see that okay, commission?
Not yet. Now we do.
Okay, fantastic. Um okay, so cultivation area A on the left most area. Uh is going to be relocated up near the pond, but still respecting the streamside management areas setbacks for the pond. Um that's the major, that's the major relocation. Uh the pond is located to the north of. Uh the primary cultivation sites here, uh not depicted on the site plan. The area around the pond is open grasslands. Um with slopes generally less than fifteen percent. Uh no new disturbances are required for the placement of that cultivation, nor any tree removal is planned. With association of that cultivation relocation. The other uh cultivation area, cultivation area F is only minorly being adjusted. The, that is. Has approximately twenty plants uh that are in pots that are located. Just within the streamside management area buffer and they will simply be relocated through the northeast portion. Of that already disturbed area that is cultivation F.
Great, thanks. That that answers my question there.
Apologies for the confusion.
Any other questions for staff? Um I have one and it in regards to the road, uh roads going into this. It says on page seventy-one that. Planning and Building Department staff show requests that the applicant provide road valuation reports for this project, but I don't see. Any applicant one. I see the, what the, the county is saying, all the public roads are that are around it. But I don't see one of the applicants. Missing something? There was item D, exhibit D is what they're saying, but there is no. We said self-evaluation.
Yeah, um so there is a road evaluation that is on file that was constructed by or. Developed by DTN Engineering for the roads accessing this parcel. The comment that you are looking at is indeed from the Department of Public Works Land Use Division. Um that comment was a default comment. Many of these projects were referred back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Um without the road evaluations already on hand and that was a standard response from Public Works. Requesting that that be submitted, not for their review, but simply because it was a requirement of the ordinance.
So there is no ro- road evaluation for them. I'm not really sure what.
Um I apologize, I'm attempting to pull that up now so I could share it on screen. Um but there is a road evaluation report that uh was completed by an engineer. Uh that works for DTN Engineering and consulting. And just a minute, I will attempt to pull that up for you. Apologies for the delay. Apologies, it was muted there. I am attempting to show the road evaluation that was submitted for this application. Are you able to see that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. This is in fact the road evaluation that was performed for these access roads by the engineer David Necoletti. It is an eighty-seven page report that includes detailed descriptions and photographs of each of the road segments leading to the access road that evaluates it for the average daily traffic, not just for this project, but also all projects that have access off of that road that was known at the time and in process. The applicant is required through conditions of approval to implement the recommendations as provided by David Necoletti in this report for the improvements made to be made to the road.
And was this part of our packet? Because I was looking for it, I didn't see it, so, or is this just something that's just at the staff?
I I would have to pull that from the agenda, I apologize. It was submitted to be included in the packet delivered to you.
Attachment three of the staff report does list the road evaluation, but states it as on file. Typically, we do attach them. Appears to be listed as on file for this report.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open up the public comment? All right, thank you. I'm gonna now open this up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Would the applicant like to speak? I have seven oh seven, not, two two, two three. Go ahead. Go ahead, two two, two three, star six to unmute.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Craig Johnson, Southern Humboldt resident of thirty years. And I'm familiar with this neighborhood and this farm. And as you can see by the dates that this applicant came in to the process, they were one of the early adopters into the cannabis program. And they have been as a person and as a business, a leader in our community, and it through the whole process. And I am in favor of seeing this approved this evening, and I appreciate all your thoughts around it. But we need to be clear on what we're looking at. And from a, from a, a community view, I'm seeing rain catchment, I'm seeing pond, I'm seeing solar panels, and I'm seeing the applicant that's willing to work hard to bring their farm into full compliance. Thank you, and I appreciate the moment to comment.
Thank you. Next caller is public seven one zero eight. Seven one zero eight?
Yes. I think it's really great that they have the water stuff. The thing I was interested in is where are these fifteen employees going to be coming from? And I thought it was generators, but now you're saying they're gonna have solar. So, yeah, where is the fifteen employees coming from? Thanks.
Any other callers? All right, see you then. I'll close the public comment, and I will let staff answer that question, somebody like Dave on the employees.
I do not have any direct information on the location in which the employees that would be employed seasonally currently reside. For the power, as displayed in my presentation, there's a five kilowatt solar system, but also two generators, as noticed, a fifteen kilowatt generator and a five kilowatt generator.
All right, I'll bring it back to the commission. And put the bots. For the questions for staff? If you care to make a motion.
I can make a motion.
Heck no.
All right, I'll, motion that the planning commission finds that Rebel Ground LLC conditional use permit and special permit record number PLN one one two two three assessor parcel number two one eight zero nine one zero zero eight, project in the new Harris area has met all of the required conditions and we that's right, there's only that one condition, okay. And that the commission will approve this project with the recommended conditions from staff.
You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, see you then. Laura, rule of thumb, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes. Motion carries man in us. Brings us on to item number five. Tony Palmera, Stacy Palmera, and Rachel Star conditional use permit in the Alder Point area.
Good evening again, commissioners. My name is Max Okun, and I am presenting the Tony Palmar, Stacy Palmar, and Rachel Star conditional use permit. Can you hear and see my screen okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. The proposed project is a conditional permit for twenty-four thousand square feet of cultivation consisting of fourteen thousand four hundred eighty-eight square feet full sun, as well as five thousand five hundred twelve square feet of light deprivation and four thousand square feet of mixed light cultivation. The drying, storage, and processing occurs onsite in an existing four thousand square foot building. Up to ten employees may be onsite during peak operation. Power for the site is currently provided by generators. However, the applicant is in the process of transitioning to PG&E. And for clarity, the applicant already has a hundred amp PG&E service, and they already have the diagrams drawn up for the four hundred amp service, but PG&E will not move forward with the process until this project is approved. Water resource utilization for this project, the annual water use estimated is at two hundred eighteen thousand gallons. Comes out to about nine gallons per square foot. The irrigation water will be sourced from a permitted well. That well is in the process of being created and permitted. The existing available water storage onsite is three thousand eight hundred gallons. The access to the site is via a private driveway directly off of Alder Point Road. Alder Point Road is a category, category four county maintained roadway in this section. The slide is showing an aerial image of the cultivation area as proposed through this project. I have added clarification for where that existing PG&E power pool already is with the one hundred amp service. That concludes my presentation. I'm gonna turn it back over to planning commission.
Any questions for Max?
Yes. So about the water resources, it was real brief on what you said, and the amount of water available for storage was minimal basically on your presentation, three thousand gallons, was that it?
That is correct, three thousand eight hundred gallons.
So I'm looking in the report here on page four, and it's saying there, the project's conditioned to have the applicants install additional water storage so that a total available water storage is a hundred ninety-three thousand gallons?
That is correct. The well has not yet been determined to be hydrologically disconnected. As such, we are conditioning it as we would for a winter diversion. If the applicant cannot provide documentation indicating that it is not hydrologically connected, that is. They have two years to prove that it is hydrologically connected or to install that additional water catchment, as would be required by the state board and by, yeah, by the state water control board.
And this is a one point O application, existing grow. So they're given that little, that time there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just thought it would be good for the public to know that there are conditions when you just showed the three thousand gallons there in storage. That, that goes, ah, but I knew I had seen it in the report, so I wanted to bring that out, so thanks.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, see you then. I will open this up for public comment. And does anybody wish to speak on this? Go ahead, seven one zero eight.
Yes, thank you. I still had a question about the water. You're saying they can go ahead and use the well. They don't know if it's connected to surface waters or not. And they're gonna act as if it will until they can prove otherwise, meaning that they would store the water and not take it during the forbearance period. Or is it they go ahead and use the well without doing the forbearance and the storage for the next two years and then do that? So I think that's a big problem considering how dry it is in the Alder Point area and how much water this would be taking out. And also, the department, the fire guys, they require that I believe you need to have at least five thousand gallons water in case of a fire. Yeah, and it's like, okay, you're gonna use the, if you're gonna get PG&E, and why do you need to have these diesel generators? So, thank you.
Hope you're done. The next caller, seven four two nine.
Okay, yeah, the water is concerning, and I thank you Commissioner Newman for asking to clarify that because it was pretty shocking that three thousand eight hundred gallons was all that was they have, which it's, it still is pretty dangerous to just have that little water. There's three harvests and all on generators. And even though in the project it states that the, that there is a possible upgrade to four hundred amp services in the works, I'm concerned and would hope that the project has a will serve letter from PG&E because the issue is not that they don't have PG&E, but that PG&E cannot provide that upgrade to the four hundred amp power, that they don't have the capacity out there. And that's for two years or more that they could be running the generators and two years more for the neighbors who've already complained and will have to be the, the local cops and report the noise as they have before and the light pollution that they have before and the trash problems that they've been reporting. So I also, on the water, I thought this is a proposed well. And so I'm a little confused about that because how do you receive proof that the well's not hydrologically connected? If it's, if it's just proposed? So perhaps rather than drilling a well, they could just work on their storage. And this is another project that has the owners listed out of the area. Their, their addresses in Southern California. So I'm not sure about the stewardship issue here again. Okay, thank you.
Any other callers? Okay, see you then. I'll close public comment and give staff an opportunity to answer any of those questions.
Absolutely. As, as the project is currently conditioned to the first question regarding the use of the well until it can be proven to be hydrologically disconnected. That is a good question. The project is allowed to use the well for a two-year period. And during that two years, they have the ability to come into compliance with that either or situation. Either they prove that it is indeed hydrologically disconnected or it will be continued to be acted upon as if it is a point of diversion. And they will be required to adhere to all forbearance requirements as directed by the state water resource control board. Sorry, I took some notes on those questions. I believe there's a question regarding why there was still generator use if the applicant either already has PG&E whereas in the process of any additional use of PG&E. The generators are still currently being utilized as the service that exists onsite cannot handle the load required. The applicant has been working with PG&E. They have a power diagram already drawn up. And PG&E is simply awaiting for this project to be approved and the processing building to receive full permitting before they can hook up a four hundred amp service to the site. The project is conditioned so that within two years, the applicant is no longer allowed to use any generators associated with this project except for in emergency power outage situations, in which case the applicant will have to actually log the reasons and the time and date used for these generators. I believe the, there is concerns regarding the generator noise levels, lights from the mixed light cultivation, and the issue of cleanliness of site. The project is conditioned under standard noise and light conditions, which is fifty decibels at the edge of property line or a hundred feet to riparian habitat for noise and for light meeting international dark sky standards. In July thirtieth, I actually went out to the site because of some similar public comments that were received. Myself and a member of the county planning department took noise readings of the generators and found that those noise readings without and found that those noise readings without containment were averaging about 48 decibels at the property line, which is below the requirement of the ordinance. The mixed light cultivation area was not in use. And the agent on site, which is the site operator, informed me that they had no intention of continuing the mixed light cultivation until they did get the power from PG&E. To be able to support that, so they would not need to use generators to support the mixed light cultivation areas. While there, I did assess the site to see if there's any cleanliness issues. And found a few red spittle cups that were quickly cleaned up while I was there. Otherwise, the site was fairly clean and fairly standard for most cultivation areas that I've inspected as well. I believe that addressed the public comments. If there's any more comments, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, Max. The director likes that.
Max, help us understand something here. Is this existing or new cultivation?
This is existing cultivation.
So what is their existing source of water?
Great question. The cultivation area did not cultivate this year. They were previously getting their water from the Alderpoint Water District. In 2019, the Alderpoint Water District indicated that they would no longer support cannabis irrigation. And so the project has not been cultivating this year because they did not have a water source. That is the reason for the proposed well. And how we are treating the well moving forward requiring the proof of hydrologic disconnectivity or be treated as a diversion.
Thanks, Max. If I could add something for the commission's consideration. Because this is a pre-existing cultivation operation, the ordinance does allow for compliance agreement to be entered into so that they can have up to
Before you go too far down that path, the well is new. It doesn't qualify.
What I was going to suggest is that it allows up to two years, but that's at the planning commission's discretion.
I would say that they either need to provide forbearance before cultivating or that or that the well be demonstrated to be not hydrologically connected.
Anything else?
No, that's enough. So we, I would ask the commission if you're going to approve this to modify the conditioning. To require that prior to any cultivation, the well log and analysis be provided to the planning and bowling department demonstrating that well is not pulling water from a underflow of a surface flow. And if it is found to be connected, that the project be required to forbear during summer months prior to any cultivation beginning.
So all right, post public comments, we're gonna go back to panel. Any questions? Staff, now we have some new information or anything that you heard tonight. I guess the director would with that addition, you think you'd be okay to go ahead or this is rubbish? Continue to let me bring that back?
With that change, I think you're fine to act on this tonight.
Okay.
And and I was going to make the motion with that extra requirement, those two requirements that fold into one that the director mentioned. So I move that we find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration of the CMMLO as described by section 15164 of the state secret guidelines. And make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving Tony Palermo, Stacy Palermo, and Rachel Starr project as recommended by staff subject to the conditions that the director pointed out about the well and forbearance if there is not proof of the disconnection.
I'll second that.
We have motion to second any further discussion. See you then. Would ask Laura for a roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. That brings us to item number six, which is Soul Arc Solutions Incorporated conditional use permit in the Edersburg area.
Good evening, yet again commissioners. My name is Max Open and I'm presenting the the Soul Arc Solutions Incorporated conditional use permit and special permit. Can you see my screen and hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, the proposed project is a conditional use permit for 27,000 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation. Dry and in storage will occur onsite, processing will occur offsite. Up to four employees will be utilized onsite during peak operations. Power for the site is provided by a generator. The special permit is for the continued use of surface water diversion. Getting into the water resources, the annual water use estimated for this project is 274,000 gallons. Comes out to about 10.15 gallons per square foot. Irrigation water will be sourced from a surface point of diversion as well as rainwater catchment. Existing available water storage is 321,600 gallons. A note about the rainwater catchment, I did receive a call from the representative of this project. She did indicate that the rainwater catchment pond on the adjacent parcel just down to the south, which is owned by the same owner. Is able to supply up to 90% of the current water needs for this project through rainwater catchment, which would reduce the reliance on the point of diversion. Access to the site is via private access road from Walder Ridge Road. A detailed road evaluation report was prepared for this project that indicates the private road is able to excuse me, that the current road is able to handle the proposed use. This is a slide showing an aerial image of, or rather a plot plan of the cultivation area as proposed on the subject parcel. Highlighted down to the south, there is that rainwater catchment pond that I had mentioned previously in the blue ellipse. That concludes my presentation for you today and I will bring it back to the commission for questions.
Any questions for Max? I will open this up for public comment. Anybody that wishes to speak on this one? Go ahead, Shannon Gibson.
Hello, planning commissioners. I am Shannon Gibson. I am the head of compliance and agent for this project. We are present and available for any questions you might have. I would like you to consider removing condition number 12 from the project description. Condition number 12, conditions that we add rainwater catchment to all 27 hoop houses. These are PVC hoop houses that are very small and often don't have their skins. It would be difficult to add rainwater catchment to it, and I do believe that the rainwater catchment pond has the same intent.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, you're 7429.
Well, I just want to say great water storage. It's fantastic that you've got so much. And I would like to say that I hope you can please develop your proposed solar system as soon as possible. It looked like it was going to be quite large and could handle your project. So, thank you.
7101? 7108?
Yeah, I just want to second what Robby said about this grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public that wish to comment on this one? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. See, Melanie has her hand up.
Yes, I think that in light of the very superior, at least responsible water collection that this project is planning to have and the extensive botanical surveys and other analyses, I would like to motion that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted MND for the CMMLO as described by section 15164 of the sequel guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit. And adopt the resolution approving the Soul Arc Solutions Incorporated project as recommended by staff subject to the recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
I would second that, but I wonder if you would consider the point that the applicant applicant's agent raised requesting the removal of that one condition. I sort of wanted to hear a little bit more about that. So I will go ahead and second the motion as it is, but I just wanted to raise that issue for discussion.
And that's what I was as well. Thanks, Noah.
Yeah, perhaps we could hear from staff on that.
Why that was in there with the rain catchment that's in there? What was the thought behind this?
Would the applicant or staff like to answer that?
Yes, really, it's Maxwell.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the reason that I included that condition and some of the substantial analysis that you will see in the executive summary regarding the rainwater catchment potential. If utilizing the greenhouses was because the total capture allotment at the time of preparing the staff report was not known to me through the pond use. And I wanted to capture the project as proposed by the applicant that they did want to primarily utilize rainwater catchment. So I established this so that it could be approved. And with no additional information, should no additional information be provided regarding the pond use? Pond use information was provided, but fairly late in the process of the staff report development. I believe that the pond as it sits does substantially meet the intent of the project. It meets the needs for the estimated water usage for the site. And does meet the intent of the condition that I included, which is condition number 12 and the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay, yes, that was understanding. So removing the condition wouldn't really change very much then? What you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I I gathered as well. Thank you.
Mike, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I have a question regarding this pond being on a separate parcel. And is there any sort of way of conditioning this like we have in the past when we've had water on one parcel without enough on the current one that's being permitted? Did that other parcel get permitted already and was it talked about or conditioned in there that it would provide for this permit here? So that's my part on that.
The parcel in which the pond currently resides resides, excuse me, was in fact permitted for cultivation last year. It did not include the analysis for use for this project. However, that analysis was performed in the and is depicted in the executive summary for this project, which takes into account the amount of water utilized from that pond for that previously approved project. And looks at the amount of remaining water that would be left over in that pond to act as storage and to provide for the water required for the estimated amounts annually. The amount left over is included in the total water storage amount that was described in my presentation and is noticed.
And Max, did we include a condition for a contingent easement so that if the parcels are held separately, that you're still the right to use the water and transport the water back to this parcel?
We did not. When drafting this, I had considered the use of sourcing rainwater catchment onsite through the greenhouses. I believe that we could certainly add that in if that is the discretion of the planning commission.
Staff would recommend that commission substitute condition 12 with standard contingent easement language.
Mike, I see you have your hand back. Where is that?
No, it wasn't back. It was just never lowered.
Taken down.
Don't we have somebody that can lower hands over there?
We do. He's on it. Thank you.
So can I ask Melanie, as the maker of the motion, just so it's clear, can we amend the motion to include the director's suggested substitute condition 12?
Yes.
Thank you. I would second that change.
And that makes me a lot more comfortable.
Okay, any further discussion? See, and then I will ask Laura for a roll call vote.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Okay. Let's go on to item number seven, Greenwave Farms LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair Bongio, members of the commission. I'm Stephen Santos, presenting the conditional use permit for Greenwave Farms. Let me share my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes. Well, it's just black. You can hear your voice. There it is.
All right. So we have a conditional use permit application in the Hydesville-Curlada community planning area. Access to the project is off of River Bard Road, which comes off of Highway 36. The project consists of 10,000 square feet of new mixed light cannabis cultivation and includes a 1,000 square foot ancillary propagation area. The project also includes construction of a 20 The project also includes construction of a twenty-five hundred square foot onsite processing building as well as one thousand two hundred and eighty square feet for drying and storage. The water profile of the project includes a one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred gallon annual water budget, which translates roughly into fourteen gallons per square foot per year. That calculation includes the ancillary nursery. The breakdown of the water budget includes forty-four thousand gallons from rainwater catchment, seventy-five thousand three hundred gallons from dehumidifier recapture, and thirty-five thousand one hundred gallons from a proposed well. The water storage for the project totals forty-seven thousand gallons. The project parcel is approximately seven acres, zoned AE agriculture exclusive with a land use designation of agricultural exclusive, also AE. Uh, the project either meets setbacks or has obtained setback waivers from adjacent property owners. For example, there's a setback waiver from the undeveloped parcel to the north. Uh, it is noted uh, that the project is located within a FEMA mapped one hundred year flood plain, and the project is conditioned to comply with the county's flood ordinance. Uh, I apologize in advance for the fuzzy plot plan. Sometimes it doesn't import very well in, in the PowerPoint. Uh, but we can see that the operation is concentrated in the middle of the parcel with the processing, parking, and drawing uh, left of center and the cultivation and nursery right of center. The staff recommendation is that the commission find that it is considered the addendum to the adopted EIR for the CCLUO, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Greenwave Farms LLC conditional use permit subject to conditions of approval. I'm now available for questions and will return my screen.
Thank you. Any questions? Just you. Right, so none. I will open this up for public comment. Thank you, Steve. And is there any public who has to comment on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Wait, there was somebody just came up. Seven one zero eight. Saved by the bell.
Yeah, I guess my question for this one is the proposed well and uh, this recap water recapture from dehumidifiers sounds very interesting. Hundred and fifty-four thousand plot gallons needed. Forty-seven thousand storage and, you know, if they have PG&E, that's great because then won't have to deal with generators. But my question is about the proposed well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll close the public comment and the staff would like to address the well question.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bongio. Yeah, in response to the comments from caller seven one zero eight, the proposed well does have two conditions uh, associated with it. And the applicant must provide documentation uh, to the county, to the department's satisfaction that the well is hydrologically disconnected. If they are unable to do that, they must reduce, reduce their water budget accordingly or uh, replace uh, the water difference with an eligible uh, water source. Uh, the public comment also mentioned the dehumidifiers. Um, from the applicant, there will be a total of ten uh, dehumidifiers uh, recapturing up to two hundred and fifty gallons of water per day that will be hooked up directly to uh, storage tanks. Um, and it would take approximately three hundred days uh, out of the year uh, for the dehumidifiers to capture the amount of water allocated uh, for them in the water budget.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay. So I'll bring this back to the commission. Uh, and Mike has his hand up.
I, I just wanted to comment um, and make it public that is part of the condition on the well, that's approved attachment one, number four, part B. Um, it, it's not just proved to the county, but it's provide an analysis and conclusions prepared by a qualified professional demonstrating the well is not connected. So I just wanted to point that out for the public as well for the record.
Any other questions for staff or thoughts on this one? Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. With respect to Greenwave Farms LLC, I find, I move that we find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted environmental impact report for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance, CCLUO, as described by section one five one six four of the state sequel guidelines, make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the Greenwave Farms LLC conditional use permit as recommended by staff subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, seconding further discussion. All right, seeing none, Laura, a roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio? Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. Brings us on to item number eight, Westside Heritage Incorporated Conditional Use Permit in the Redway area.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Uh, but it needs to be made into a big one. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Abby, and I am the assigned planner for Westside Heritage Farms LLC, application number one two nine two eight. The um, applicant, the project is located um, just east of the Redway area in the Edersburg area. It's a legal parcel. It's owned forestry recreation with a confining zone of unclassified and a land use designation of residential agriculture. You see four parcels highlighted here because all four um, parcels have cannabis applications and they are owned by the same applicant. The project description, well, let me just go back to that really quick. The northernmost parcel um, here is the one that we are hearing tonight. Typically, we would bring forward all four applications so that you could review them all under as one. However, the other three applications weren't prepared yet, and the applicant is hoping to get a rainwater catchment pond installed before the wet season. The um, application is for a conditional use permit for fourteen thousand four hundred square feet of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. The applicant was initially was approved for mixed light, but did revert to outdoor to conserve energy. Um, he will be using light deprivation techniques to obtain to harvest annually. Water will be sourced from the uh, well located on the adjacent parcel, which is under the same ownership, and the applicant has a two million gallon rainwater catchment pond proposed. There is an existing um, water storage of fifty thousand gallons, and he's proposing an additional twenty-five thousand gallons. And his projected annual water usage is a hundred and fifty thousand gallons. The energy for the project will be sourced from sixteen two hundred and fifty watt solar panels, and he also has a backup twenty-five kilowatt propane generator, which will only be used in emergency situations. As I said, this is an outdoor operation, so there won't be any lights needed in the greenhouses. However, there will be drying and curing onsite. Uh, further processing will occur at a licensed third-party processing facility. Uh, this, uh, the photo on the left here is the applicant's site plan, as you can see in the um, far bottom right. They have the proposed rainwater catchment pond. It's a fairly simple operation. There's no residents onsite, um, and there's just some ancillary uh, structures. And the photo on the right is just a blown up photo of all four applications. The project, um, all four projects were reviewed under sequel. The sequel addendum in the staff report um, has these figures here. I won't go through it. Um, I won't go through the whole thing, but I will say that the total cultivation area after if, I suppose, all four projects are approved would be forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet, um, of which four thousand eight hundred square feet would be mixed light. The total propagation space is four thousand square feet. It's all, um, all the propagation space is located on one parcel to conserve energy, and it does not exceed the ten percent allotted under the ordinance. The total annual water usage for all projects combined would be three hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons. Staff recommend that the commission find the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLUO as described by section one five one six four of state sequel guidelines, and make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the project as recommended um, by staff subject to the recommended conditions. And I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions for Abby? All right.
I actually have one.
Okay, go ahead, Noah, and then Mike has his hand up as well.
Yeah, um, thank you, Abby, for that presentation. Um, I just was noticing though that on the, on the table showing the parcels, uh, the four projects with their different characteristics, two of them say that they're expecting to have PG&E power or or presently have PG&E power. I know those are, those are not the ones that are before us tonight, but I just wonder if you could say any, anything more about the PG&E?
Yeah, two of the applications do have PG&E. Um, the one that you're, that is before you tonight, uh, PG&E told the applicant that they were unable to connect the PG&E to that parcel.
I see. So, but they are, um, and, and what is the um, timing associated with their commitment to installing solar? Um, the solar panels?
Oh, the sixteen um, panels that are currently in, those are currently in place.
Oh, those are currently in place. Okay, my, my misunderstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Uh, Mike, you have a question?
Uh, yes, uh, for staff on, on this, um, does this have um, the um, uh, conditional part of the permit for uh, if any parcel is sold because of this having a pond on it?
The um, pond is proposed so that condition has not been imposed on the applicant, but if you would like, we could create a condition to include a contingent easement for the pond.
Could I interrupt real quick? Sorry about that. But Abby, the pond is proposed on this parcel, correct?
That is correct.
So it would seem that that would be an appropriate condition for the other uh, applications once those come forward.
Right.
So I think we'll make sure to, to, to bring that forward with that, those conditions added.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna open this up for public. So, uh, first caller is seven four two nine.
Well, we're, we're always concerned with wells, but with the proposed pond to be installed before the twenty-twenty-two cultivation cycle, I, I really want to commend uh, that plan. It'll be great to have that big of a pond for local fire emergencies. And also since it'll be uh, so large, I just think it'll be an asset to the community. Also, thank you uh, to the applicant for having a solar array for your power and only doing two harvests, so you don't need light. So uh, I, I think this, this looks very good. Thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. What do you guys think? Any more questions and would like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. So I'll move that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLUO pursuant to section fifteen one six four of the state sequel guidelines, making all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving Westside Heritage Farms Inc. project subject to the recommended conditions.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Our motion carries unanimous. Which brings us to item number nine. Humfire LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area.
Uh, good evening again, commissioners. Um, I am also the assigned planner for Humfire LLC, application number one two nine four three. The project site is located in the Garberville area. It is a legal parcel. It has a zoning of timberland production zone, and the land use designation is timberland. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit for seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. Uh, up till this point, they have held an interim permit for only eight thousand square feet. They do intend to utilize light depth to obtain two harvests, and they will have an eight hundred and fifty square foot nursery. On March fifth, twenty-twenty-one, myself and uh, my supervisor visited the site to um, observe evidence the applicant had of historic cultivation. Uh, we observed three locations and we um, saw old grow bags, water lines, and smart pots. And to the best of our ability, we got an approximate count which resulted in um, so we found approximately two hundred and seventy-five grow bags. And with the average plant size being thirty-six square feet, multiplying those two, we've got an additional nine thousand square feet. Um, so, that being said, they are applying for seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet now. The water source for the project is an existing well. They also have registered spring diversion. The projected annual water usage is a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per year, six point nine eight gallons per square feet, square foot. Um, water storage totals a hundred and seven thousand gallons, and an additional eighteen thousand gallons of water is proposed to match their annual water usage. Energy currently is provided by a two thousand watt generator, and um, the well pump is operated by solar. By January first, twenty-twenty-four, the applicant's conditioned to have attained, obtained renewable energy that's capable of providing for their operation. Processing such as drying and curing occurs onsite. However, further processing occurs at a licensed third-party processing facility. This is just a photo of the applicant's site plan. In the orange squares, that's where um, the cultivation will be occurring. There are existing greenhouses and some proposed greenhouses as well. And um, the blue square is the immature plant area as well as a single greenhouse. The two blue triangles, one, the one on the far left is the existing well, and the one on the far right is the unnamed spring. The project was referred to as Cal Fire, and Cal Fire recommended, um, well, they stated that they could not support the project. Um, the uh, subject parcel did experience some timber conversion that occurred post-two thousand sixteen baseline conditions. On the left was two thousand sixteen, and on the right is um, the applicant, the, the subject parcel currently in two thousand twenty-one. Um, the applicant is going to be, or the project is conditioned such that there would be no net timber conversion. The um, total conversion area was one point one seven acres, and the applicant has re, has submitted a restocking plan that would restock an area of one point three one acres. Looking at this map, which is similar to the site plan, all of the red circles with hash marks, those are the areas of conversion, and all of the red circles, um, those are the areas that will be restocked. red circles, those are the areas that will be restocked. The project was also referred to CDFW who recommended that they are, they stated that they couldn't support the project at seventeen thousand nine hundred square feet. They recommend approval of eight thousand square feet as the applicant has been operating under their interim permit. CDFW was on site when staff conducted the site visit to determine historic cultivation, although CDFW did not hike down to one of the main historical cultivation areas where we found a majority of the, of the materials. I, I personally submitted a map to them with our average plant count from each area and I didn't receive a response to that second batch of information. They also stated that they believe that the, this was also submitted by Scott Bauer, I should say. They think that the approved cultivation area should be consistent with the physical conditions of the site at the time of the CEQA baseline. So therefore, given the lack of supporting evidence, they can only support eight thousand square feet. They also state at the end there that they believe that the project, any new cultivation should be considered just that, which is new. However, I'll remind you, this is Timberland production zone, so there is no option for new cultivation for this applicant. Staff recommend that the commission find the project consistent with the MND for the CMM L U O as described by one five one six four of the state CEQA guidelines and make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions within the staff report. And I'm available for questions.
Go ahead Noah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm still trying to understand exactly where, where things came out between the county and the Department of Efficient Wildlife. And first of all, I'm just, I'm just a little puzzled because you described in the staff report a joint site, site visit with the intention of ascertaining the historic grow area. And yet they didn't, the CDFW representatives didn't join you for that part of it to witness the, some of the historic grow sites and, and then afterwards, it seems that they're not accepting your account of, or, I mean, I'm just not sure where things came out with CDFW and the evidence that you submitted. So if you could clarify that a little bit, thank you.
So I did invite CDFW out to the site visit because we were going to identify historic cultivation. However, they were also there to, I believe they were in the process of handling the notification for the applicant's LSAA. So when Cliff Johnson and I viewed the initial historic cultivation area, I believe they were talking with the applicant about his LSAA and they didn't visit that site. And they actually never referred, or they never responded to my second batch of information where I created a map for them showing what areas we, we, we had surveyed and what plant count we believed to have been there.
Commissioner Levy, I'll just add a little bit more perspective because I was on, on the site. There was, I believe, four areas where the applicant had stated that there was pre-existing cultivation that would, would have been hidden from satellite imagery. And so the very first one that Ms. Strickland and I and the applicant's agent hiked around in was the one that we found the most evidence of pre-existing cultivation. And that is the one that unfortunately, CDFW staff was not, did not accompany us on. So the other three areas that we went to, I think CDFW staff accompanied us on two of those. And we are mostly in agreement with CDFW staff that those areas did not have a whole lot of evidence. But, but the first one that we went to had a substantial amount of evidence and unfortunately, they were not present when we toured that area.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions for staff? And then we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anywhere from the public who wishes to comment on this project? Go ahead, seven ones, you're right.
Yes, I have a question. I thought that to be existing had to be existing prior to, is it December twenty sixteen or something like that? So I don't know how you can go out years later to determine that something was going on, you know, years before. And if it didn't, it wasn't brought forth before, it's kind of like, does it qualify for the pre-existing? So I'm with the CDF for sticking with the eight thousand square feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven four two nine, please.
I'm a little confused on this one. Are you suggesting that CDFW is saying only do a certain amount and you're suggesting to do a larger amount? And so that means you're not following what CDFW says? That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody else who would speak on public? See now, we'll close it and bring it back. But staff, answer any of those questions.
I'll jump in and basically in response to the question, yes, staff is recommending an amount of pre-existing cultivation based upon what we saw in the field and that is more than what CDFW is recommending. It is not uncommon for us to evaluate pre-existing cultivation sites based upon material we find in the field. And yes, pre-existing does need to be in place prior to January first of two thousand and sixteen. It is our opinion that that exists prior to January first of two thousand and sixteen.
So, bring it back to the commission. Is there any questions you have or someone who wants to make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead Mike.
So I'd like to motion, make a recommendation that we adapt the resolution finding commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the CCM L U O pursuant to section fifteen one six four of state CEQA guidelines, making all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the Humfire LLC subject to recommended conditions.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And Laura, you'll call her please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Yes.
Noah Levy?
If the order of motion carries unanimously. All right, there's just item number ten. Ubank Creek LLC conditional use permit, special permit and lot line adjustment in the Bryson area.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you all see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I am also the assigned planner for Ubank Creek LLC, application number one two nine seven two.
Are we able to go to one slide showing?
Oh, is it not there?
It, it's showing the next slide that's going to come up as well as the current slide.
There we go.
Okay, hopefully that's right again.
Yeah.
Out? No.
No.
I don't know how I did this, how I messed this up. Now is it working?
Wait now, there you go. Oh God.
Okay, I, at this point, let's just go for it, right? There's nothing too big on here you have to see. So, Ubank Creek LLC, application number one two nine seven two. There are four APNs involved in this project. So, the project is located just northwest of the White Thorne area. It is a legal parcel zoned unclassified and has a land use designation of residential agriculture. The applicant's seeking a conditional use permit for a full acre of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. They will be utilizing light deprivation to achieve two harvests and they are proposing a propagation space of three thousand three hundred and twenty square feet. The water source is a well located on the adjacent parcel under the same ownership and they also have a point of diversion from Ubank Creek. There's a proposed one point four million gallon rainwater catchment pond and their projected annual water usage is five hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred gallons and water storage totals two hundred and five thousand gallons without the pond included as it is proposed. They are also seeking the completion of a lot line adjustment which would be, occur between two parcels resulting in two parcels, but now there would be approximately eighty acres. There's also an active zoning clearance certificate on the adjacent parcel that is part of the lot line adjustment. The energy for the project currently is two three thousand watt generators. However, they do have a proposed eight hundred square foot solar array which will be located on a proposed building. Processing such as drying and carrying will occur on site and the further processing will occur at a licensed third-party processing facility. This here is a photo of applicant's site plan. If you look at the far left, these, this is the parcel configuration prior to the lot line adjustment. The site plan in the center is what the two parcels would look like once the lot line adjustments completed to eighty acre parcels. And on the far right is the applicant's site plan where you can see the graded flat with the proposed and some existing greenhouses as well as the proposed rainwater catchment pond. Staff recommends that you find the project consistent with the MND for the CMM L U O and as described by section one five one six four of the state CEQA guidelines and make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and lot line adjustment and adopt the resolution approving the Ubank Creek LLC project as recommended by staff.
Abby, is there any questions?
What about the, the water is on one parcel and grows on the other? Do we have access to if they come split down the road?
The zoning clearance certificate would require that contingent easement. However, that application has not been processed yet. It's, it's getting close, so I can just, I'm also the assigned planner for that project, so I can keep in mind to create that contingent easement, although it's a zoning clearance certificate, so it won't become, it won't come before you.
Okay, so it will be on there?
Yes, it will.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open this up to public then. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this one? Go ahead Roddy.
There's a little bit of a delay. So that's why it takes so long. So the storage is now two hundred and five thousand gallons, but they use almost six hundred thousand gallons. So the pond seems that it's essential because although that report states that staff believes that the aquifer is confined and therefore not hydrologically connected to surface water, I did not see any professional opinion to back that up, to back up staff's belief. Ubanks Creek, which runs right through this property, is a fish bearing stream and drains to the Matol River. And at this time, the Matol River is no longer flowing. It has become disconnected. And it's a very serious situation. I also am hoping that there can be a little bit of speed work on getting their solar array in so that they can get off of the generators. And if it's gonna take a long time to get this pond in, perhaps a little bit of downsizing is appropriate until that water is secure. All right, thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this one? All right, see now, I'm gonna close public comment and bring this back to the commission. Is staff like to address any of those concerns?
I will say that I neglected to add a condition requiring a solar be obtained by a certain date. So if it would please commission, we could, we could add that stipulation.
You have Mike. Chair.
All right, go ahead. I'm not seeing. Go ahead.
So, part of, part of the question then would be as well about the hydrologically connected on the pond, any of that information? Is there a professional opinion in here similar to what a well is and that? Is it gonna be just a rain catchment pond? Or what? And forbearance and that sort of thing?
The rain, the pond that's proposed will be a rainwater catchment pond and they are attempting to have that pond in before the next season. So currently, they do not have enough water storage for them to forbear from the well. If you would like them to have to obtain that storage before the next cultivation season, we could do that. And perhaps you would just add that if the rainwater catchment pond isn't implemented by sometime, then they would have to obtain water storage to forbear from the well if that's, if that's what you think would be best.
I think that's what we need to do.
I agree.
Got the applicant, you got the applicant. This is the applicant. Hands up. So go ahead Claude.
All right. Can you guys hear me this evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to touch in on the condition that you're speaking about, about the full cultivation prior to having the rain catchment pond in. I think that makes sense. I was wanting to add that whether it was rain catchment pond or potentially additional tank depending on the schedule at which the pond can be constructed. The intention is to move quickly if on constructed this season, but we all understand what could happen and would like that the condition and the applicant would accept the condition that they could cultivate as much as water was stored on site, if you understand that comment. And that we should have the pond in place, but if not, we would like the ability to add additional tanks to equal the amount of water needed for the cultivation year. And I'm available to answer any further questions regarding the information presented. I will, I guess, touch in on the well. It is a groundwater well and it, you know, the water was found at about a hundred and fifty It is a groundwater well, and it, you know, the water was found at about 150 feet below the surface, and it is screened between that 140 and 200 feet is where the water is coming from that well. The intention of the whole project is that this project has a robust rainwater collection pond. It has a legal water right for diversion to storage, and we are looking to use the well as an additional backup. And so, it comes with complete resilience for all conditions that could be presented, and the one holdup is the compliance of getting the storage on site within a reasonable amount of time. I hope that helps the understanding. I'm here for further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Any questions for Brad?
A timeframe for the solar, what do you think would be a good timeframe for that? I think we've been doing two years, but...
If that's a question for me as applicant, two years is a reasonable expectation. We'd be, we'll take that condition.
Great, thank you.
All right. Want to make a motion on this one? Are there questions?
I could make a motion. I move that we... Sorry about that.
All good.
Sorry about that. I move that we find the, the commission has considered the addendum to the MND for the CMM L U O pursuant to Section 15164 of the State Sequer Guidelines, that we make all of the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the Eubank Creek LLC project, subject to the recommended conditions and with two additional conditions or stipulations, one being that the solar panels should be installed in no less than two years, and the second being that the amount of approved cultivation should be limited to the amount for which there is water stored on this parcel, whether through the proposed pond or through additional hard tanks. Hopefully, that captures the intent of those conditions.
You have a motion? We have second?
That, that sounds like it. There are no all second now.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, it, it probably doesn't make a big difference, but I think it's probably a slip. I said no less than two years.
Sorry, I meant, I meant to say no more than two years. My apologies. Thank you for catching that, Melanie.
I think we all knew what you meant.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Yeah, no, thanks for being precise.
All right. Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See, and then Laura will call both.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. That brings us number 11. Number 11, House of Flower LLC, conditional use permit in the Dempo area.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, I'm Jordan Mayer with ICF. Thank you for hanging in there this evening. House of Flower LLC is located in the Bimbo area. You can see it here just to the southeast, southeast of Bimbo Lake State Recreation Area. This application is for 22,000 square feet of existing outdoor light deprivation cultivation. It's housed within greenhouses without artificial lights. It's on two flats on the area, and the ancillary nursery space would be limited to 10% of the cultivation area. Irrigation water is sourced from three existing rain catchment ponds that total over 472,000 gallons, as well as 96,000 gallons of adjacent water storage for a total amount in excess of the water usage, which is 355,000 gallons. Electricity is provided by a small solar power system and two generators. The generators are housed within insulated noise containment sheds, and during the harvest, usage is on average to be 12 kilowatts per day, which comes out roughly to three to five loads of laundry. And that depends on the need for duration of ventilation and use of other farming equipment. Sorry for this dense slide. I just wanted to highlight some selected conditions of approval that are placed on this application. The first comes from the Timberland Resource Consultants Timber Conversion Report. They evaluated the cultivation areas, and they found that, in fact, almost two acres of timberland were converted historically in 2005 and 2006. And those are where the two cultivation areas are currently located. To come in compliance with the farming, the fire risk, they ask that the, recommend that the tree trimming slash that remains on the ground around these originally cleared areas be, be removed to reduce fire risk, and that has been made a condition of approval. A road evaluation report, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. The access driveway, which is related to the road evaluation report, was found to, to connect to a county maintained road, and so that, that access needs to be paved in congruence with the Public Works recommendation. A site management plan was prepared by Margaroe Advisors, and I believe they're on the call tonight. And the best practical treatment and control measures that are recommended within there are made conditions of approval. And lastly, DTN Engineering did a road evaluation report, and they found that there were several potentially crushed or clogged culverts along Rice Hill Road, which accesses the parcel. And the road evaluation report made the recommendation that the applicant provide photographic evidence of each of the four photo points to satisfy that these potentially clogged or crushed culverts are repaired. And that has been made a condition of approval. Here's the property map. You can see there's two cultivation areas shown in white on the left. And the figure on the right is just another kind of zoomed in view, where you can see it's a dense array of greenhouses. And we have aerial photos that were taken by Timberland Resource Consultants, which I found very useful. Here you can see cultivation area one of two. You can see two ponds in the left that are lined with the water storage tanks, and you can see a dense clustering of, what is it, the seven light deprivation greenhouses on that, in that clearing. Cultivation area two has the third rain catchment pond and some additional storage, including some large storage tanks visible on the right. And you can see here a higher density of greenhouses that are already in existence. They're all lighted up. And one additional greenhouse is proposed at this site on the project. So, the staff recommendation from our view of the evidence and comments from the referral agencies, we believe that the applicant has submitted evidence in support of making all the required findings for approval of this conditional permit. Please let me know if you have questions.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll open this up for public. Anybody who wishes to comment on this project? Seeing none, a closed public comment. Any thoughts on this one? Care to make the motion? No, we're shorthanded tonight, guys. Help me out here.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like to find that the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration, MND, for the CMM L U O as described by Section 15164 of the State California Environmental Quality Act or SEQUA Guidelines, making all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the House Flower LLC conditional use permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? See, and then Laura will call both, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. That brings us, that brings us to item number 12, West Point Timberland Incorporated Special Permits in the Dempo area.
All right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is it on the right one this time? I think it is. All right, Commissioner Newman's agreeing. That's good. So, I'm also the assigned planner for West Point Timberland, Inc. This is going to be a fairly quick one, I think. Application number 16086. The application is, the subject parcel is located in the Dinsmore area, right off County Line Creek Road. As you can see, to the east there, it's Trinity County. The applicant was seeking an acre of existing outdoor cultivation with a proposed well, and two generators were going to be the energy source, and processing was going to occur on site. In August 2020, we issued a violation because the applicant was cultivating without the required state and county permits, and the violation was issued for 8,793 square feet. The applicant paid the fee, the fines required, and he was also notified that additional unauthorized cultivation would really, would result in the denial of the permit application. In August of 2021, cultivation appeared to be occurring again without the state and county permits that are required. So, we did send a additional violation letter, but this time it said your project will be going forward for denial at the planning commission hearing tonight. Staff recommends that the commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Sequer Guidelines, Section 15270, and make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and adopt the resolution denying the proposed West Point Timberland project. And I am available for questions.
All right. Any questions for Abby? Seeing none, we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this project? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead, Noah. Okay, go ahead, Noah.
I'll motion that the planning commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Sequer Guidelines, Section 15270. Make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and adopt the resolution denying the proposed West Point Timberland Incorporated project.
I will second that.
There was second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Laura will call both.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Laura. That brings us to our final item, item number 13, Eel River Produce LLC Special Permits Zoning Clearance Certificates in the Red Crest area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dez Johnston, planner assigned to this application. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Eel River Produce is application 16417, special permits and zoning clearance.
We're not seeing your presentation anymore.
It's a cool picture, though.
Are you asking me to skip it and go to recommendations? I'd be happy.
Lots of luck on that.
All right. Okay, the 30.5 acre project site parcel is in the Red Crest area, more specifically in the Holmes Flat, on the south side of Holmes Flat Road.
Dez, are you going to show the presentation?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. What happened? I thought I shared it. Are you not seeing it?
It disappeared.
You started it at the first, then we went to this nice nighttime camping.
Yeah, I think what it's probably doing is sending it to your other screen. It sometimes will, oh, there you go. You got it.
You good now? Okay, sorry about that.
Now you know why we were laughing.
That was my effort to jump to recommendation. Okay, so it's a 30.5 acre site in the Red Crest area, Holmes Flat, south side of Holmes Flat Road. The project site has an approved commercial nursery already for, via CCC, and is approved for three triple Rs at 60,000 square feet of full sun outdoor. That's approved already. This proposal is for a CCC for a fourth triple R to allow 20,000 square feet of outdoor light deprivation, and a special permit to allow 32,000 square feet of outdoor light deprivation and 10,000 square feet of mixed light. So, the total proposed cultivation requested here is 63,200 square feet, or 1.45 acres. Also requested is a special permit to vary from the 600-foot setback from the state park. This is the site plan. It's, north is to the right, and Holmes Flat Road is on, on the right edge of the site. And you can see most or all of the application components are at the north end of the site, on the right. And to the left of that are, is a class three stream and some wetlands and forest. So, the project is substantially just on the north end of the site. Cultivation is employed partially dry farming, employs dry farming. And when irrigated, water will be sourced from rainwater catchment directly into tanks, from the tanks and from one of the greenhouse roofs. The applicant estimates the water needs for existing and proposed cannabis is 161,000 gallons annually, and water storage will be provided by tanks at 170,000 gallons. A condition of approval is recommended for a meter to be placed on an existing domestic well that is not to be used for cannabis. There is a section of the CCL UO that requires a 600-foot setback from public park, and also provides that this may be reduced by special permit. A portion of the components of the project is within 76 feet of that setback from Humboldt Redwood State Park. The applicant requests a special permit for a reduced setback to 524 feet. State Park staff requested additional information, and the applicant prepared a new site plan based on a field field boundary survey provided by licensed surveyor. The applicant offered also to ensure that the eight greenhouses within that seventy-six foot area be modified to ensure that no noise impact. And this is also recommended as a condition of approval. Since that park staff has not expressed opposition to the special permit nor any other conditions. In California Environmental Quality Act, initial study mitigated declaration was prepared and circulated for the thirty day public review. There were eleven mitigation measures recommended in the initial study for biological resources, cultural resources and geology and soils. And these are also included in the recommended conditions of approval. Comments were received during the thirty day public review from three agencies and a neighbor. Staff does not believe that the comments changed the conclusions of the mitigated negative declaration. Staff recommends that the commission has considered the mitigated negative declaration prepared for Eel River Produce. Make the findings in support of the mitigated negative declaration and adopt it. They call required findings for approval of the special permits and the zoning clearance and adopt the resolution for them. That concludes the staff report.
Good director.
I just wanted to clarify for the commission that you do need to consider the mitigated negative declaration, but the action that you'll ultimately take is to adopt it.
Any questions for staff? So yes, Mike, sir?
Yes. Got me on mute there. Just a little question. I don't believe it looks like the Humboldt Redwood State Park staff was satisfied with the requirements that they asked for and the applicant has granted that that will be part of the required mitigation. But I'm curious, are there any trails close by to there in that part of the state park?
No, there aren't. Actually, we did look at that and measured that and there, there is a picnic area. That's the closest thing, but it's pretty far into the park. It's, it's way, it's beyond a thousand feet at least.
Yeah, it's closer to the road, isn't it?
That's right.
Two fifty-four, the Avenue of the Giants.
Okay, yes.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I just wanted to clarify that the existing, the summary, the project description says that the water will be, sorry, the sole source of irrigation is rainwater catchment captured directly and stored in hard tanks. So there's, that's currently the case then, that the existing and already permitted cultivation is irrigated solely by rainwater catchment, water source from rainwater catchment. Is that correct?
That's right. At least for the nursery, the commercial nursery, the, the other triple R that was approved, I'm not sure that it's up and going yet. One of my colleagues visited the site on my behalf. He's been there several times, at least Holmes Flat area. I didn't ask him that question. So there is the applicant's agent I see available. He might be able to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so currently everything is watered using the existing storage. There's a total of twenty-four five thousand gallon tanks on site. They're not all full right now, but there's more than sufficient water to use for the rest of this year. And then, you know, hopefully we capture enough water and we'll be expanding the tank site for, for next season as we face this project in, assuming it's approved. The, this particular project is primarily dry farm, so we're using, you know, the stored water basically to supplement the dry farming. It's in Holmes Flat, which is a floodplain, has a very high water table and moist soil, so that makes it, you know, use less water than a lot of other areas.
Right. Okay, thank you so much for that explanation.
Any other questions? See none? I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Holmes. Go ahead. Star six, unmuted.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is April. I'm the across the street neighbor from the applicant's property. And I have seven questions and concerns that I would like addressed by the, by the board. The first being that, the first time we met about this last year, the applicant in question was in violation for a pipe that was illegal, that they had water pipes that they had on. And I am wondering what kind of the policy you have in place that allows previous violators that they can just reapply every year. I'm wondering what allows, what policy that the planning commission allows to have that happen. The second question I have is last time we went about this, the planning commission requested that the applicant reach out to us without a third party present. I felt like that was unacceptable, uncomfortable for both parties. And what is the planning commission doing to fix that issue? The third question I have is during the environmental, the environmental impact report, are there animal migration considered with all the fencing that has gone on in our valley? Now, when you drive down our flat, it's almost, there's nowhere for the animals to migrate from the state park side to the river. The fourth question I have is when the applicants are inspected, it is an informed inspection and it's scheduled and they have foreknowledge of when that's happening? And is there any plan in place to have any kind of inspection happen without being scheduled? The fifth question I have in regards to the planning commission rezoning of our valley, since it was done without the consent of the governed here in our valley. I'm wondering what kind of limits there are or if there is a percentage limitation for however many grows or acreage you can have in this proposed zone. As we bought our property more than ten years ago and our aerial picture of our valley has changed dramatically as our six and eight-year-old have grown up here and just seen our neighborhood completely changed. The sixth question I have is, oh, regarding just this one meeting, you know, I've been signed on since six o'clock. It would be awesome if the secretary could like give us a contact information and maybe we could be like text, texted or phone called before our agenda item came up since we have been on since six o'clock. The seventh question and concern I have and recommendation is just since this is a conditional use permit and you, you all have the right and taxpayer information, you consider our situation, the past practice and violations of the applicant on the property and exercise your empathy and moral judgment as to our situation here, right across the street from my son's bedroom window. The smell of what we have to have here. And our view completely changed and our, our whole valley has changed. I'm just asking that you consider that. So thank you.
Thank you. Next caller's seven four two nine.
Well, this is a huge project. The total is to have three point oh six acres. I don't know if you're clear on that. It's, it's a huge project. And adding another RRR for a total of four, isn't that stacking? Isn't there a two RRR limit now? So that's a real concern. The ten thousand square feet is mixed light and plans to have year-round growing and harvesting. And I'm wondering who's gonna be monitoring that and the well that's planned to not be used. And there's no mention of employees. This is three acres. What, what's going on with how that is dealt with? And the animal migrations is a very serious issue. We have the redwood parks right there and this, no access to the river is, is critical. I do sympathize greatly with the last caller for having their entire neighborhood completely changed by the addition of all these growth. And I also want to comment that permitting another huge grow is a nail in the coffin of the smaller farms that you've permitted that actually are in deep trouble. So thank you.
Thank you. Caller two five one zero.
Hi, my name's Amber and I represent farmers in the area and help with onsite compliance and metric work. And I just would like to say that I hope you approve this project because they follow the rules, they're good neighbors and they're fourth and fifth generation Humboldt Board. So thank you for your opportunity to comment.
Public seven one zero eight. Seven one zero eight.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with the concerns from Roby and the neighbor across the street and the fact that this is huge. I also, my question was, they said that they were gonna modify the greenhouses that are next to the state park so that there is no noise impact. I'm wondering if there's really gonna be no noise or it'll just be this hum at a certain level. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more call says Holmes, but that was the first caller. If it's the same caller, you only get one. Yeah, so. Same caller?
It's another neighbor here that it's another neighbor here. If they would be allowed to speak, that'd be wonderful.
That's fine.
Thank you, dear.
In contradiction to the representative for the grow, the gentleman that owns the property, Mr. Williamson, is a convicted felon and they were caught years ago pepper spraying a gentleman in Fortuna. This guy is not a good individual. They have already linked the egg well to the nursery last year and got caught and you guys waived it. There's four nurseries over there now. And why are they still full of weed right now when their, their pot is out in the field? This is what I don't understand. I have pictures from last year when the pot plants were in the greenhouse and they were four and a half feet tall. And I know they're not supposed to be over thirty inches. So continually they push the limits. And I have plenty of information, plenty of pictures to create a real good lawsuit because nobody's around to take in any of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers? Right, see none? I'm gonna close the public comment. So bring this back to the commission. What's the thoughts of the commission? Go ahead, Noah.
Uh, yeah, I guess I just would be curious to ask the staff if you could provide any more background as to the violations that are alleged to have occurred. I, I didn't quite catch the nature of what those violations was. And, and how that was and, and how that came to light and what the staff's opinion is about the track record of this applicant to follow the conditions that we do apply.
Yeah, John, I, I don't have background on violations on the site, so I don't know the answer to that.
Perhaps you could help me if I get this partially incorrect, but it seems to me that there have been a number of complaints relative to the site. We have sent inspectors out to the site to verify whether or not there are violations there. As I recall, there probably have been some fairly minor violations that have been corrected. We have not identified anything that is significant. Obviously, based upon an earlier action tonight, when we find significant violations, we, we, we take appropriate action.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point that you make, Director, that we just denied another project that you found had a history of violations. However, in this case, your opinion or the staff's opinion is that the general intent of this applicant has been to follow as best they can and, and not cheat the rules?
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioner Levy, if I could respond to that. There's, I think one important thing I need to say is that oftentimes we enter into some of these permitting processes where the applicant becomes on trial. And we don't permit people, we permit land use. And so we base that upon the facts associated with what is happening on the ground and what we can demonstrate, what we can find. If a neighbor has evidence that the site is being operated, not in compliance, we'd love to see that, happy to further investigate that, happy to go out and, and look at the site again. But without having demonstrable evidence that the site is a violation, we, we, we can't speculate that it is a violation. We do investigate when we get complaints.
Okay, thanks for that, Director.
Mike, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. One of the questions that was asked and, and also that came to mind when we've been discussing this is the site inspections, are they strictly scheduled? Or are there some pop quizzes, so to speak, drop-ins to double check about complaints?
Well, I'll, I'll tackle that. Thanks, Commissioner Newman. The county ordinance does say that we can do, the county can do inspections with twenty-four hours' notice. Now, it has occurred and the planning commission has imposed this condition on a, a couple other projects in the past where they have approved a project with a condition that the county may conduct no-notice inspections. And so I think if that's a concern here, there is a precedent for imposing that condition.
Thank you, Claude.
We are at nine thirty right now, guys. Do you feel like we can wrap this up or do we feel like we need to continue this one? I think we can wrap it up tonight.
I think we can wrap it up.
All right.
Sure.
So where do we want to go? So where do we want to go with it?
The one question that I've got, one other question is because of it being an RRR, is this operated by one operator? Or are there three other operators and this is a separate one? It's one operator, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct. It's a single entity, two owners that that are business partners in the operation.
So they bought RRR permitting possibilities? Is that right?
Yes.
Somebody that somebody that couldn't grow in their land but have the right.
Correct. They acquired RRR donor site applications and they have acquired three so far. They have not acquired the fourth, which they're applying for right now.
That answer your question, Mike, because I don't even know who who's speaking right now, to be honest.
What's that?
I'm not even sure who just started speaking. Somebody just answered your question, but I'm not sure who it was.
That was Dustin Owens, part of the agent, I believe.
Well, I think I'm prepared to make a motion. I would move that we find the commission has considered the mitigated negative deck prepared for the Eel River Produce LLC project pursuant to section fifteen oh seven four of the state sequel guidelines, make the findings in support of the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigated negative declaration, make all the required findings for approval of the special permits and zoning clearance certificate, and approve the Eel River Produce special permits, zoning clearance certificate, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions. And I would suggest that we add the condition that Mr. Johnson suggested, which would allow for the staff at its discretion to conduct no notice inspections for compliance.
Yes, great.
One second.
Was that a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Commissioner Levy, in your motion, I'm assuming when you said consider, you do mean adopt the mitigated negative declaration?
Yes, if I if I misspoke, I meant to say adopt, thank you.
So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? See, and then I would call for the vote, Laura.
Melanie McCaber?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio? Noah Levy?
Yes.
No.
All right, so we have a tie, so means.
I mean, it doesn't it doesn't pass.
We've got a couple different options at this point. You could try to reformulate a different motion. You could continue it until there are additional members of the commission present to vote on this.
I think my thought is is to continue it with additional members present in making the condition, the no notice inspection availability.
Was that a motion?
Was that a motion to to do that, Mike?
Yes, yes, it is.
A second for that motion.
Oh, I'll second it.
I think that was Melanie.
Any further discussion? See, and then we'll call for a vote on that.
Is this, sorry, is this for continuing to date uncertain?
Indeed, let's make it to a date certain for October seventh, which would be the next planning commission meeting.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Melanie McCaber?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries in the analyst period to an October seventh meeting. All right, with that, you're, are there any things you need?
Not tonight.
So we're running late and so you will adjourn this meeting of the planning commission and we will see you on October seventh. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.